Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, April 6, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation in honor of Industry Appreciation Week. Naming the week of April 12, 2010, as Industry Appreciation Week in Henry County, Georgia. Whereas industry in Henry County is one of the cornerstones and the foundation of our strong diversified economic base, and whereas Henry County's industries continue to contribute to the local quality of life through the creation of quality jobs and the innovation of new products and technologies, as well as the community service of these corporations and their employees, and whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners would like to join the Henry County Development Authority and the Henry County Chamber of Commerce in recognizing the pioneering history, resilient spirit, and sustained economic impact of manufacturing and industry in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of April 12, 2010 shall be known as Henry County Industry Appreciation Week to coincide with the Governor's statewide proclamation of Georgia Manufacturing Appreciation Week. Be it further proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation for the vital contribution these industries have made in our community the sixth day of April, 2010, the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And I know we have representatives here from the Development Authority, and who would like to come, would you all like to come forward and receive this proclamation? The next item on the agenda is a resolution appointing representatives from Henry County to the Butts, Henry, Lamar, Spalding Joint Development Authority. Our presenter is Mr. Bob White, Executive Director of the Henry County Development Authority, and that's exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning again, Madam Chairman. This is working, if not. Again, we have Mr. Jim White, who is the Chairman of the Development Authority, and Vicky Loper, who is our representative from District Three on the Development Authority Board. In 1994, the state legislature passed the Business Expansion Support Act, which really enabled a number of heretofore unavailable economic incentives for businesses to expand and locate in Georgia. One of the elements of that particular bill in an effort to spur regional issues and regional support, regional cooperation, and regionalism was by authorizing joint development authorities, which had previously been enacted in state law, but there really weren't very many of them, to get an additional benefit of a bonus for each job that was created in communities that were partners in a regional joint development authority, which consisted of one or more contiguous counties. In that initial period in 1995, Henry County partnered with Butts and Spalding County to create the Butts, Henry, Spalding County Joint Development Authority. As part of that, joint proclamations issued by all of the Boards of Commissioners for those areas appointed the members to the Joint Development Authority from Henry County. As a result of the statutes and the way that it's set up, the members of the Joint Development Authority must be sitting members of the Development Authorities of the individual counties that are in there. So we've had successive members representing Henry County on that board. Later in 1995, Lamar County requested the ability to join that Joint Development Authority, and it was enabled by proclamation and resolution of the Boards of Commissioners for those three counties and Lamar County in October, 1995. So it became the Butts, Henry, Lamar, Spalding County Joint Development Authority. So periodically, when you have changes, people rotating off boards, deaths, and other situations among your membership, we had several openings on our Joint Development Authority, and it was time for appointments anyway and reappointments to that Joint Development Authority. So the Development Authority, at its most recent meeting, recommended to you, the Chairman, the Vice Chairman, and the Secretary Treasurer, the officers of the Development Authority, be the Henry County Representatives on the Butts, Henry, Lamar, Spalding County Joint Development Authority. And as part of that, joint proclamations issued by all of the Boards of Commissioners for those areas appointed the members to the Joint Development Authority from Henry County. As a result of the statutes and the way that it's set up, the members of the Joint Development Authority must be sitting members of the Development Authorities of the individual counties that are in there. So we've had successive members representing Henry County on that board. Later in 1995, Lamar County requested the ability to join that Joint Development Authority, and it was enabled by proclamation and resolution of the Boards of Commissioners for those three counties and Lamar County in October, 1995. So it became the Butts, Henry, Lamar, Spalding County Joint Development Authority. So periodically, when you have changes, people rotating off boards, deaths, and other situations among your membership, we had several openings on our Joint Development Authority, and it was time for appointments anyway and reappointments to that Joint Development Authority. So the Development Authority, at its most recent meeting, recommended to you, the Chairman, the Vice Chairman, and the Secretary Treasurer, the officers of the Development Authority, be the Henry County Representatives on the Butts, Henry, Lamar, Spalding County Joint Development Authority, and that was transmitted to you for that membership. One thing to note that, the law was changed several years ago to permit communities to participate in more than one Joint Development Authority. Initially, when this was formed in 1995, we had a lot of parallels, a lot of common issues with Spalding County, with Butts County, with Lamar County. But as we've grown in stature, we've grown in size, and grown in importance in our role in the metro Atlanta area, there are also other opportunities to be coming up in the future, possibly joining in with some of the counties to our north as part of the Joint Development Authority in metro Atlanta. So this is likely not to be the last time that you'll see us on the question of Joint Development Authorities, but for the Butts, Henry, Lamar, Spalding County Joint Development Authority, we are requesting that you do appoint the members for three-year terms to the Joint Development Authority effective with your vote. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does any board member have a question or comment about this item?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment. It's not necessarily about this item, but I think the Development Authority and Bob White need some recognition, quite a bit of recognition. Why? Henry County's position economically is the envy of many counties around us, and much of that goes to previous Development Authorities and current, to help keep the balance of our taxes in line, where they bring the economic base. Is it what we want? Is it what Bob, or his Board, or Jim White, or anyone desires? They're certainly desiring more. We get criticized about having so many warehouses. It's an evolution process. You have to have that before you can attract the white-collar, high-tech industries, and that is very competitive. And I know I'm speaking to Bob, and it's, I'm speaking to the choir, but this is a fact. These people have done a good job, and this is just my opinion, in my personal opinion. And I just want to say thank you for the job you have done and you're continuing to do, because it is very important to the economic stability of Henry County to have some of these, quote, "businesses" that have become undesirable to be in Henry County because they, for whatever the reason, are some of the businesses that are stable and continue to operate. So with that, I thought it was very important that the Development Authority needs recognition for what they have done and to the level that they have brought industry into Henry County.
Well, I just want to follow up with a comment too, because we had a conversation earlier talking about how important it is to have continuity, not only on the Board of Commissioners, but on other boards as well. And that's why Henry County has seen the tremendous progress that we've seen in the last few years, is because of that continuity. And of course, with the retirement of Mr. Carter, to have someone on a board for 40 years is just, is phenomenal, and he's been a huge part of the economic prosperity of this county. Again, that continuity is very important, because it takes so long for someone to come up to speed, once they take in a position, to understand the dynamics and how it works. I think the continuity has especially helped the Development Authority too.
True.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you, appointing James White, David Gill, and Vicky Loper to the Board of the Butts, Henry, Lamar, Spalding Joint Development Authority for a three-year term, and I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is under Public Safety, a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase cab-forward mirrors. Our presenter is Chief Lacy of the Fire Department, exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning. The resolution that you have before you this morning is to award the purchase of 14 sets of cab-forward mirrors to Ramco Engineering Incorporated. They are the manufacturers of these mirrors, and they are also the, gave us the most responsive bid in terms of that. I will remind you that this is part of the purchase that we are making under the grant award that was from the Assistance to Firefighter Grant that the Board accepted last month.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
I just have a comment. I actually visited a couple of fire stations, and I think they need those mirrors. I really do. The door-mounted mirrors are, even in some of the trucks that I own, the door-mounted mirrors in my older dump trucks, after a little while, they do get to where you can't really see anything, because they're always doing this number. So I really do believe they need them.
Any other questions or comments? If not, there's a resolution before you approving the award to cab-forward mirrors to Ramco Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $11,511.64. I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman? Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Social Services, we have a resolution requesting approval of a contract amendment number one for the Georgia Department of Human Services Coordinated Transportation Contract. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning. The Transit Department has been providing transportation for the Georgia Department of Human Services for their consumers who are attending programs here in Henry County for the past several years. The Department of Human Services anticipated that the Department of Family and Children's Services will not have enough money to cover the trips that they need for the balance of the year. So they are going to, would like to increase our current contract by $5,938. The total for the entire contract with the state would be $507,964.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you agreeing to and accepting amendment number one for the Georgia Department of Human Services Coordinated Transportation, for Transportation Assistance, and I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works, a resolution requesting award of a bid for full-depth reclamation work on Hearn Road. Our presenter is Mr. Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, exhibit number four. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. We have a request to award a bid for full-depth reclamation on Hearn Road. The Department of Transportation has a project to improve a section of Hearn Road. This is from Pernola Road to Austin, using the method of cement-stabilized reclaimed base construction, where this process uses the existing roadway materials mixed with Portland cement, cement to form the roadway base. The county will then apply two lifts of asphalt on top of it. This process is more cost-effective and environmentally friendly than rebuilding the existing roadway with new, more costly materials. Project was bid through the Purchasing Department. Eight vendors were sent the bid packages. Five vendors submitted bids. We would recommend award to the lowest bid, which is blunt construction, in the base amount of $104,000. We have given them 90 days to complete this project. I might add that part of the asphalt that's going on top, one lift of that will be paid for by LARP, our Georgia DOT. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
I just had a comment. Notice you got one, two, three, four, five bidders, and the low bidder was over 20% low. It's pretty substantial in a $100,000 bid to be 20% low. That, is there any rhyme or reason that you can come up with why he would be so much lower than the others?
I have talked to the vendor, and we were going over a couple of things. One of the things I talked to him about was to make sure that he understood he had to put down the prime code. If you notice on that bid, he bid zero per gallon. He said that was included in the reclamation bid, or the cement-treated base course. Of course, then he came up and he said, "I sure would like to go back and add a little bit to that," but he said, "I wanted to make sure I got it." There was two other reclamation projects in the county that he did not get, so I think he was quite willing or wanted this one.
I was just curious. You know, 20% on $100,000, I mean, that's, you know, that's more than, most of the time than 100. You know, it's kind of like he took it, obviously, may have took it for nothing, actually, just cost to do it, but...
We were quite excited about that. We really liked this bid.
I understand.
So we were glad that he was quite hungry ourselves.
As long as you checked it out, and, you know, like you said, zero on the prime code, I mean, as long as, you know, he can't come back and add something for that, even though the prime code's involved. I just wanted to be sure that, and you did, I mean, you've explained it well, that you did go back and talk to him to be sure.
This contractor, I might add, is the same one that did Mount Carmel.
All right. I'm fine with it. Thank you.
That is a great process, and I had an opportunity to go out and watch them do a portion of Mount Carmel Road, and that's, I hope that we can use that in the future, because it is a lot more environmentally friendly to recycle it in that fashion, and that road turned out beautiful. Mount Carmel Road was, it just turned out fantastic.
And it's holding up well, so this process is proving to be pretty good. Actually, the cost for us to go in there and deep-patch this road, about 70% of this road would have had to have been deep-patched, and it got to the point, it was just as economical to redo the whole road as it was to patch it. So that's why we elected to go with this process.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution awarding the bid to blunt construction in total amount of $104,000, and Mr. Bazler, is this in your district?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, request for approval of amendments to Henry County Code Section 3-14-50 and 3-14-25. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and Dottie Green, Occupational Tax Alcoholic Beverage Supervisor, exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board Members. In conjunction with the rise in population that we've seen in the county over the past number of years, the county has also seen a steady rise in number of restaurants wishing to locate here within our community. Due to the proximity of number of our churches and schools, and their proximity to some of our commercial areas, they've experienced a large, a lot of difficulty in being able to find suitable locations based in large parts of our current ordinance. Staff, over the last six months, working with Dottie in her office, we reviewed our current alcohol beverage ordinance, and we've compared it with other jurisdictions, as well as comparing it with state regulations, state guidelines, and we'd like to recommend, staff has recommended, we make four amendments to our current alcohol ordinance, and if I may, I'll just kind of go through and hit the, what the principal amendments that we're proposing are. The first one is Section 3-14-25 would be to amend the ordinance to allow persons over the age of 18 to dispense, serve, sell, or take orders for alcoholic beverages, which are sold for consumption on the premises only, again, within restaurants. What our, the way our current ordinance reads now is, if you're, you may work in a convenience store or supermarket and sell, you know, for consumption off premises. You can work, if you're under age of 21, you can be 18, 19, or 20, and work in those capacities. However, the way our ordinance reads right now, for a establishment, for, as a restaurant that sells consumption of beer and wine on premises, or alcoholic beverages on premises, you have to be over 21 to be able to serve or dispense. So what that's done is, it's eliminated the opportunity for principally kids coming home from college to serve as waiters. They can work in the restaurant, they just cannot serve as waiters or waitresses. So we wanted to change the ordinance, again, it's still within the state regulations, to allow those between the ages of 18 and 21 to be able to serve as waiter, waitresses within restaurants. That's the first amendment. Second amendment is to amend the ordinance such that the distance requirements shall only apply to businesses which propose to sell beer and wine for consumption off premises, not for on-premises. And again, that is still in accordance with our state regulations. Therefore, restaurants would be exempt from the distance requirements. The sale, I just want to make sure to emphasize this point, the sale of distilled spirits for consumption off premises, i.e. package stores, are still not, will still continue to be prohibited within unincorporated Henry County. And that's a key point, want to make sure we stress to the Board. Third point is to amend the current ordinance to modify the distance requirements for businesses which sell beer and wine for consumption off premises to their proximity to schools by reducing the distance from 1,000 feet to 600 feet, which will continue to exceed the state requirements. And lastly, to amend the current ordinance such that the minimum distance requirement shall not apply to any church, college, or university located within a shopping center. As you know, throughout Henry County, we have a number of churches that typically, as a startup, they may start within a, within a commercial strip center. What that'll do, based on our current ordinance, that'll prohibit a restaurant from being able to locate within that area, within that same strip center. So, you know, we use a commonly accepted definition of what encompasses a strip center, and if a church chooses to locate within a strip center, they do so with the understanding that a restaurant may, may in fact choose to locate within, within that same strip center, and they would not be bound by the distance requirements. Again, myself and Ms. Green are here to address any questions that the Board may have.
Are there any questions or comments from Board Members?
I have a question, Michael. For clarification, on the one where men in the age, in other words, an 18-year-old can take the order, but an 18-year-old can't bring it back to the table, correct?
That's correct. That is correct. They can take the order, but they cannot physically bring the beverage to the table, in this case, in a restaurant.
Under state law, they do what? They would be allowed to do it?
Under state law, yes, at age 18, they're able to take the order and bring the order back to the, to the table, you know. This is, they're already, the 18-year-olds can work in restaurants in Henry County, but it's just, you would have like almost two waiters. You'd have one that would come and take your food order, and then the other one, you know, has to be over 21 in order to bring any alcoholic beverages back to the table.
Okay. Thank you.
But if they worked in a convenience store, and someone brought, say, a six-pack of beer to the register, they could ring it up and sell it at 18?
Right, because it's, it's packaged, it's not open, and that's state regulation. State allows that, so we're trying, we're getting in the same area, same line as state. So they are allowed to do that in a convenience store. It's an open container.
Okay.
It's open.
In all cases, we will either meet or exceed the state requirements.
Okay. Mr. Bowman?
I'm going to have several questions. One, did you say that now in Henry County, that someone at a convenience store can sell alcoholic beverages if they're 18 years old?
That's correct.
In Henry County, really?
That's correct.
Wow.
Within a convenience store, or gas station, those kind of facilities.
Crow group.
Crow group, right.
It's interesting. The only thing that bothers me about it is the difference between 18 and 21. I understand it's only three years, but there's a lot of difference in maturity between 18 and 21. Now, when that 18-year-old comes to your table, who checks the identification? The 18-year-old?
Yes.
If the 18-year-old takes the order but does not deliver the alcoholic beverage, who checks the identification?
It would be...
The 18-year-old?
You mean, in the case of the proposed ordinance, if, or the current ordinance, if the 18-year-old cannot currently, if the 18-year-old takes the order, then they'd be responsible for checking the identification?
So the 18-year-old checks the identification, but a 21-year-old brings the alcoholic beverage?
That's correct. The way it's currently structured.
That's kind of a mess, isn't it? Because if the 18-year-old wanted to sell to another 18 or 19-year-old, they just say, "I checked it"? Is that what happens?
They could, house, I guess, ATF is really scrutinizes the restaurants in the convenience stores, um, you know, selling to underage minors. So I believe that someone that is hired by a restaurant goes through really a stringent program on what they, you know, should and should not do, and the consequences. So what you're saying could happen, it could happen even with a 21-year-old, you know.
Well, that's true, but I was going with the fact, I understand that, but I was going with the fact that the difference between an 18-year-old and 21-year-old is a maturity issue and not, not an age issue. So I understand, that's, a 30-year-old can sell it to an 18-year-old. That goes without saying.
Right.
So I understand that. I understand that fully. But, I mean, my situation would be is, you know, what about the 18-year-old kid that fell five floors to his death because he was drunk in Panama City, that, you know, athlete that had a full ride to Notre Dame? I mean, I wonder who sold that to him? I just have a little bit of an issue with that. As far as, you know, with the age thing, I have an issue with that. With the distance, I really have an issue with the distance. I mean, what's wrong with 1,000 feet? What's wrong with that? I understand the one where if they're in a shopping center, or they're in a, or they're in another thing, it's not a church, it's a church, but it's actually meeting in a, in a not-church area. I understand that too, but just because Clayton County does it, and just because the other areas do it, does that mean that we need to do it? Do we, does it mean that we need to change hours to match up with others? I'm not sure that that's true. I understand that, that's, it's really, I mean, the thing about home from college, most of the kids that are home from college, you know, there's kids in high school that are still 18 years old.
That's true.
So I mean, there's, you know, it's, that 18-year-old thing is kind of, to me, it just kind of opens the door for peer pressure and some other things for younger people, and I, you know, I may have a little bit of a problem. The statement about the rise in population and that, I think with the rise in population, we should be more careful with how we treat it and not less. I don't think that we should change our things and lessen what we're doing, just because, you know, the rise in population. I think we have a responsibility to be more, to be, you know, to look after our people more than, and, other than less, so. That's all I have. I'm just, I'm uneasy about it. I mean, when you and I talked about it, Mike, I told you, I was going to be uneasy with it, and I am uneasy with it. You know, the difference between a 30-year-old and a 33-year-old is only three years too, but there's a lot of difference in maturity. But when you're down there, you know, it's like the difference in, it's like the difference in a 14-year-old and a 17-year-old, you know, would you want your daughter dating a 17-year-old? Well, probably not, you know? If you want to get right down to this, she's 14. So the difference in three years really gets where it doesn't make any difference as you get older, but the difference in 18 and 21, I understand numerically it's three years, but I think there's some maturity issues there, and that's really all I have on it, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And to your point, Commissioner, we did, we tried to weigh all those considerations. A lot of it came back, but we were getting a number of requests for restaurants within some of our commercial districts, and that did serve as some of the impetus for moving forward and looking at the ordinance itself. We made it a point to speak with representatives from the State Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Division, and reviewed the ordinance with them as well, to make sure it did meet muster. You know, but certainly you raised some valid points. We wanted to make sure that we were, you know, servicing every aspect and every, every demographic within the county, so, you know, at the same time, we're wanting to help promote and bring the restaurants in, want, you know, see what we can do to make sure we did that without, without having a detrimental effect from a, from a social standpoint, and that's why we wanted to make sure that our requirements still, in that case, and distance requirement, it still exceeds the state. I think the state requirement is 100 yards, and we've doubled that in the system.
Yeah, I understand you guys work very hard on it, and I appreciate your work, I really do. I mean, I know it's a tough job, that what you guys have to do, but, you know, I felt like it's necessary to render my opinion on it, and so, but I understand and I appreciate all that you do. You work very hard in your department, and I understand that, so.
With respect to the age of individuals who can serve alcohol in restaurants, there was a... To the age of individuals who can serve alcohol in restaurants, there was a similar ordinance in the city of Atlanta that got challenged, and was struck down by the Court of Appeals as being in conflict with state law on that issue. So I do believe that if we were challenged on that particular ordinance provision, we would be, we would not prevail because we're in conflict with state law, which allows 18-year-olds to work in restaurants. And, and you have raised some valid concerns and considerations, Commissioner Bowman, but state law allows that, and we can't in this instance have a situation that is more restricted than what state law permits.
Any other questions or comments?
I agree with you.
Mr. Basler?
I, when I think about, when we're talking about 18 years old, it, it does raise some concerns with myself. 20-year-old, I'd probably be a little bit more amenable of, of, more to it, and I know what the other counties are. I have a, a 19-year-old niece who basically is, her and her mother supported them pretty much all her life, and she watched a restaurant makes good and tips at 19 in surrounding counties. But for us here, I kind of, I tend to agree with Commissioner Bowman when he's talking about, do we pattern ourselves just because everyone else does it? 20-year-old, at 20, I, I would, I would be more open to it, 18 does concern me. It's different than selling a, at a grocery store, whether it be Kroger's or something like that, packaged, as to taking mixed drinks or what have you to a table. And I have done a lot of soul-searching on this because I, I've got real mixed emotions about it, but, you know, you have to admit, young people are gonna, if, if they want a drink, they're gonna, they'll find a way. But what we're dealing with now is having jobs for our young people, and that's something that I'm just, I'm torn between this. Now, now the number four, I understand about the strip centers, and I'm good with that, because someone declares, we're gonna have a church, such a place like we're, we have in, in Stockbridge, and then they couldn't, so I'm good with that. But the 18, it's really, it really got me torn, so I don't know what the, the rest of the board feels, but I tend to agree with Commissioner Bowman on this, but like I said, I would be more, and I know 21, 20 is, is probably not the number that no one goes by, but 18 years old, most of, I'd say the majority of the time, these 18-year-olds are still in high school. And so I've got, I've got some concerns with this, you know, and I know, Mr. Harris, you've brought me plenty of literature and stuff that I have looked at, and I know what basically is going on in our counties, surrounding us, but, yeah, I don't know, that's, I do have some issues.
Excuse me, I have a question. You stated that, that there, there's some training involved with, do they have to, I see people wear these little cards in the restaurant, and I'm assuming that that's their authorization to serve alcoholic beverage. What kind of training do they receive?
Correct. Well, I can't tell you what training they receive. I know that there are programs that I've heard of before called TIPS, and different ones that I made, you know, like the Olive Garden, Logans and everything. I do believe that they put them through a training program on how important it is to check IDs, possibly, you know, if you have, you see someone, maybe they're supposed to take that to their manager, but, you know, having too much to drink. I mean, there's a responsibility of the corporation that owns these restaurants to train their employees and to, about, you know, checking the ID, because they can lose their license, they can be fined by the ATF, there's a lot of consequences, and of course, you know, if they are caught selling, you know, and serving to someone that's under the age of 21, and they get fined or shut down, then they're losing, you know, they're losing money. So, you know, it's important to them to, you know, follow the procedures of checking IDs and training their employees to do that.
Do they have to apply for a license to serve through the county?
They go to the police department, yes.
The police department, and the police department runs, what, a criminal background check?
They run a background check on them, right, make sure there's no, I believe they go by the same thing, there's no felonies or anything on their records in order to be able to sell, serve, or dispense.
Okay, so somebody is a convicted felon, they couldn't, they could not serve an alcoholic beverage in a restaurant in Henry County?
If they have anything on their record, if they have a felony on their record, they cannot. Just like they cannot hold an alcohol license when someone comes to hold the license for on-site consumption, they have to go through the fingerprint background check, and there's certain criterias that they cannot have on their record in order to hold that license.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. Stamey?
Michael, I have to agree with Mr. Bowman on the, on the age thing. I just think between an 18-year-old and a 21-year-old, there's a lot of difference in maturity level, and you're putting a lot of responsibility on the, on the 18-year-old to be mature enough as a 21-year-old, and they, they make mistakes, they bring their buddies in, stuff like that, but could we possibly strike number one altogether and just take it totally out and stay like we are? Because I, I think we're fine. I understand the other ones, I, I understand the growth, I understand some of the strip centers, I know some of the stuff that's going on there, but I'm just like them, I have some deep concerns of an 18-year-old, even a 19-year-old serving, and you think about where your mind is as an 18-year-old as far as consequences, opposed to a 21-year-old with consequences. I just think you have a, a greater responsibility at 21-years-old. That would just be my suggestion, I don't know what direction the board wants to go, but it would probably be my suggestion to strike number one altogether.
And if that's the board's desire, that's not, we can still amend Sections 3-14-50 and not amend Section 3-14-25, if that's the board's wish?
Yes, that's just my suggestion. I'm not making that into form of motion, I'm just telling you that's what my concern is.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, if not, we have a resolution before you, and also a suggestion by Mr. Stamey, and I'll entertain a motion.
Chair.
Mr. Holder?
For advice of counsel, she had already talked about the 20, the Section 1 or the First Amendment. I'm gonna try a motion, certainly not that I necessarily agree with it, but it, because it's, it is the legal thing, I think once we, any issue that comes before this board is looked at legally, beyond the legal aspect, everything becomes political or, or personal. So with that, I'm gonna offer the motion for approval in the form that it's written.
Can we have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries, all in favor? All opposed? All right, motion fails. Holder and Jeffries in favor, Basler, Stamey, and Bowman in opposition. Is there an alternate motion on this item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an alternate motion to modify the, the summary here and take section one out altogether, leaving two, three, and four.
And to approve the remainder?
Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey striking item one and approving the other three items, and I'll entertain a, a second on that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Basler, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries with Basler, Stamey, and Bowman in favor, Jeffries and Holder in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is under Building and Development Services. Request for a new streetlight district by SNS Corners. Our presenter is Mr. Bert Foster, Development Plan Review Director, Exhibit Number Six.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you today is a request from the property owners out at SNS Corners on Old Snapping Shoals Road for a three-light, streetlight district. The applicants have met all the requirements of the ordinance, and staff is recommending approval.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, this lies in District One, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request by Glen Ridge Development to extend their land development permit and to accept a reduction in landscaping, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Seven.
Good morning again. Before you today is a request by Glen Ridge Development to extend the duration of validity for their land disturbance permit for the proposed CVS, to be located in the southwest corner, the intersection of State Route 81 and South Bethany Road, and to have a reduction in the perimeter landscaping accepted by the board. A little history on this project, the board approved the original rezoning on this property back in October of 2008. A land disturbance permit was subsequently issued in March 2009. Land disturbance activities were commenced, however, they stopped according to development inspector logs around August 31, 2009. Unless work resumes, the LDP is set to expire August 31, 2010. A condition was placed on the property that a certain amount of right-of-way was required to be donated by the applicant to accommodate the intersection improvement, which the applicant has duly provided under the terms of the LDP that was issued in March 2009. However, since that time, SPOST has determined that an additional five feet of right-of-way is necessary to maximize the intersection improvements. This additional five feet was not specified under the terms of the original condition back in March, I'm sorry, back in October 2008. The applicant is willing to donate this additional right-of-way, which is illustrated by these hatched areas along both South Bethany Road and Highway 81, if Henry County is willing to extend the duration of the land disturbance permit until August 31, 2012, and accept a reduction in the required landscaping along those two areas. Staff has no objection to this and recommends approval, as this course of action will allow the site to remain stabilized until construction on the CVS recommences. Furthermore, staff has no objection to the reduction in the landscaping, as this is not a result of any action taken by the developer, rather the, the reduction is a result of a public road improvement project. I would like to make one minor change to the resolution before you, specifically to bullet point number three. It should read, "The applicant will satisfy all remaining conditions of zoning not deemed satisfied by this resolution."
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
I believe the developer's representative is here today, and if you'd like, I'll ask him to come forward so we can answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, please do.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Andy Welch, and I represent Glen Ridge Development. And Bert has explained the resolution to you, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
Do we have any questions or comments from Board members on this item? Basically, what you're doing is administrative, it did not require variance.
Yes, ma'am, because this is not the action by, on the developer's part. He is not asking for this reduction. This, this reduction is the result of a public road improvement project.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments? Mr. Holder, this is, I believe this is your district?
It is, it is. And I want to, I want to thank Glen Ridge for their willingness to donate the right-of-way. This reduction is, is certainly a result of our road improvement and widening. As far as the, extending the time until August of 2012, we all know what the economic circumstances are today. I have no problem with that, and with, with those comments, Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution with the amendment that staff has provided.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Holder to approve with the amended language, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is under Social Services, a resolution requesting award of a bid for temporary in-home care services. This item was tabled at the March 15 meeting. Our presenter is Mrs. Susan Craig, Director of Senior Services, and Angie Bailey, Social Services Division Director, and that's handout number one. Good morning.
Good morning. This is our, our bid that was sent out by purchasing so that we can use in-home care services from a temp agency as needed. Our recommendation is nurse pro-staffing as the overall most responsive bid.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution, Madam Chair.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes for February 1st, 2nd, 15th, and 16th, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion to approve by Mr. Jeffries, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Sanders, anything for public comment, for public session?
No ma'am.
Ms. Wiley?
No ma'am.
Anyone sign up for public comment? Upcoming meetings and events will be Monday, April 19th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, April 20th at 6:30. These are both regular board meetings. Monday, May the 3rd at 9:00 a.m., this is a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, May 4th at 9:00 a.m., we will have a regular board meeting. At this time, the board is going to recess and move to Conference Room B, and we will return in approximately an hour.